Good evening and welcome to the March 15, 2023 City Council on Housing Authority Meeting. I'll ask the clerk to call the rule.
Thank you so very much. Vice Mayor Bernusconi?
Here.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Here.
And Mayor Haldashelt?
Here.
Thank you.
Lori Benitez, would you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask the clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 15 City of Roseville City Council Meeting. If you're present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, they're available at the end of the staff table to your right. As a reminder, the Brown Act prohibits our city council from taking action or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For public comment, each speaker will be provided with three minutes at the podium on non-agendized items. The maximum allotted time for this section or portion of public comment is 25 minutes. Speakers that would like to comment on agendized items will have five minutes to express their comments and concerns to the city council. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if you address the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. And with that, thank you for your civic participation and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Yes, welcome. And now we'll be at that point in the agenda where we'll accept comments on non-agenda items. Anyone? 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 Yeah, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Meeks Harris, and for the record, I live two blocks from the police station. I don't mind sharing that. I think my neighbors are segment amendment believers, so. But anyway, I am here to just basically, I attended a well-moderated meeting on Saturday, this past Saturday, on March 11th at the Carnegie Library, and I just wanted to, besides saying thank you to the City of Roseville to have this discussion, my hope is at the end of the day that the developers and that the residents of the Fittiman area, because I almost bought over there, and I hate to say this, I bit the bullet because of everything that's going on. I want new development. However, we've got to do this smart. And I'd like to see the City of Roseville continue the history of planning and to be smart about this and include the developers and include the taxpayers or the other people that would like to be a part of this community. I am proud to be a part of this community, and I am requesting that all the people involved just get together, talk to each other. I would hate for this to go through court litigation for years. I work as a legal specialist, and that's not too much fun to watch, something that could have easily been solved in a simple meeting with a bunch of neighbors with coffee. So thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Any comments? Anyone else wish to comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move then to item seven, which is our consent calendar, and I'll ask the clerk to read the consent calendar rules.
Thank you. All matters on consent are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of, I'm sorry, unless the city council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, we've had no such request from either council or staff, and so at this time, I'd like to ask if a member of the public would like to pull any item for further discussion tonight. Mr. Mayor, seeing no one come up to the podium to request any item being pulled, for your consideration tonight, we have consent calendar items 6.1 through 6.22. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
Second.
Thank you. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yep.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unannounced.
All right, now we're at the part of the agenda where we take up ordinances, and we have item 7.1, Roseville Soccer Complex Award of Design, Build, Construction Agreement and Budget Adjustment. And we have Jill Geller and Tara G with us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Haldashelt. Good evening, everyone. I am Jill Geller, your Parks Recreation and Libraries Director, and with me is Tara G, our Park Planning and Development Manager. We're here tonight to talk about the Roseville Soccer Complex again and the award of design, so the award of the Design, Build, Construction Agreement. So Tara, take it away.
Thank you, Jill. As a reminder, this project is a 51-acre site located off of Westbrook Drive and Brookstone in West Roseville. It is next to the wastewater treatment plant, which is located to the east of the property, and city property is located to the north of, immediately north of the site, and a commercial storage facility is under construction to the south. In this slide, north is to the left, and again, as a reminder, the sports complex master plan was approved in August of 2022 and proposes a main pedestrian spine with shade canopies and misting systems, two parking lots equalling about 95 spaces per field, two plazas with restrooms, shaded picnic areas, a kid's zone, and a space for concession, official stand, as well as a staff room. It also includes a universally accessible play area, a looped walkway that provides not only a pathway within the complex but also linkages beyond the complex, allowing for better pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. We also have included a corporation yard in the plans as well. For the north parking lot, or the one on the left, the entrance is off of Westbrook Drive, which is at the bottom of the graphic, and egress would be either off of Westbrook Drive or Phillips Road. The fields will be fenced and available through reservation and rental. The playground and the loop trail will not be fenced, making these amenities available to the public. So we wanted to share with you the process that led up to tonight's recommendation. We had requests for proposals that were issued in September of 2022 seeking qualified design assist contractors. We received three submissions, which were in October, and we conducted interviews with all three companies in November. A panel of four, including our department's attorney, our consultant, Jill and myself, conducted the interviews and ranked each company. The panel took some time to evaluate and understand the experiences from both the company and their lead team members that will be brought onto this project, what the city needed from the teams to ensure we built a premier facility and their track record. As a part of the consideration, even though we provided a 75% plan with the RFP, we gave each company a more updated plan set and asked for their best price, in addition to recommendations to value engineer the project while maintaining the city's goals for the project. Negotiations began in December, late December, and concluded in January 2023. That was to obtain a guaranteed maximum price. Because the project will be built using a design-assist delivery model, there is a potential for additional cost savings. The benefit of this approach is to have a much earlier start while some work, with some work, while the rest of the plan set is being refined. This also considers adjustment to ensure costs are in alignment with the guaranteed maximum price. Constructibility reviews are concurrent with plan development, and any cost savings identified through this process will be returned to the city. An incentive that was included in the RFP was that at the end of the project, if there were any cost savings, the contractor would receive 40% of the total cost saved. Based on the process undertaken and outlined through the city's standard process for RFPs, staff is recommending the award of the design assist contract to Bothman Construction Incorporated. In a pre-proposal meeting, we shared the public excitement and interest, as well as the city's goals for this project. It's not surprising that all three proposals received were from highly reputable companies. Bothman was chosen based on their extensive design, build experience as well, as a company, as well as the staff assigned to the project. Their impressive experience with outdoor multi-field complexes similar to ours was impressive. Projects within their portfolio were similar to our goals for the soccer complex, and they provided a competitive guaranteed maximum price. Bothman has offices here in Fair Oaks and in Santa Clara. And one other note to mention, the 40% incentive outlined in the RFP, Bothman has declined the offer, allowing all savings through the process of reviewing constructibility to be fully returned to the city.
Could you say that again?
The 40% part?
They declined what?
They declined receiving the 40%. So if we actually, let's just say, we saved a million dollars through this process, and according to the RFP, Bothman would receive 40% of that million.
$100,000.
They declined receiving that 40%, allowing the city to receive all the savings back to the project.
That last part is what I didn't hear, so thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for asking. Okay, so our next steps. If approved tonight, we will issue a notice to proceed, which will officially begin the pre-construction services to collaborate with a design consultant to refine the 75% plans to 100%. Our goal is to break ground this summer, summer 2023, with a grading and underground permit. We do plan to have a groundbreaking ceremony to celebrate the milestone, likely in early June, and we will be reaching out to all of you once we have a firm date to let you know and invite you to that groundbreaking. The project will take a couple of years to complete, so that will be sometime in late 2025. So tonight, we're here seeking three action items from the council. One is to approve a budget adjustment of $5.7 million, approve the agreement between the City of Roseville and Bothman Construction Incorporated for $45.8 million, authorize staff to approve change orders not to exceed 3% of the contract amount. Tonight, we have a representative here from Bothman to share more about the company and also are available to answer any questions you may have. So this concludes my presentation. We stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Right. Council, do you want to hear from the representative before or ask questions?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Simon Murphy. I'm a senior project manager at Robert A. Bothman. I will be the project manager for Bothman on this exciting project. I've been managing large athletics, parks, and concrete projects at Bothman for over eight years now. I was previously working in our Santa Clara office that Tara mentioned. Moved up to Roseville myself in 2020 to focus on our Sacramento work. I'm extremely grateful to be here this evening, so thanks for the invite. Tara, this is a huge deal for us, this project. The significance of it to the City of Roseville, but also to Bothman, really cannot be overstated. So we really appreciate the opportunity to be part of this process and to build this amazing facility for the City of Roseville. A little bit about Bothman. We are a family-owned company. We've been in business for 45 years. As Tara mentioned, we have an office in Fair Oaks. Our corporate office is in Santa Clara, and we also have a small office in Hawaii. We have approximately 400 employees during our peak summer season, and our average employee tenure is almost nine years, which is really unheard of in construction, which is pretty prone to high turnover. We really feel like that speaks to the quality of our workforce and our company. We are a general contractor, but we do have significant self-perform capabilities. We're signatory to four local labor unions, the laborers' union, the operators' union, the cement masons, and the carpenters. This gives us the ability to physically build a lot of the infrastructure ourselves, which gives us a great amount of control over schedule, coordination, and also the quality of the project. In terms of our sports and athletics experience, we're widely recognized as the premier sports builder here in California, certainly in Northern California. We've installed over 28 million square feet of synthetic turf on our projects over the years, including the first-ever outdoor infield synthetic turf field in California back in 1993. So we've been doing it for a while. We've completed many award-winning facilities for many of our schools, city clients, community college, university, and even the region's professional sports teams, including the Oakland Raiders, the 49ers, the San Jose Earthquakes, and the San Francisco Giants. We've, in fact, completed so many high school track and field stadiums and sports fields that you're really never far away from a Bothman-built sports facility wherever you are in Northern California. We also have built more all-inclusive playground installations than any other contractor in Northern California. We also just want to speak to the collaborative delivery experience that we have, such as the design assist on this project. Over half of our revenue is related to contracts of this nature, so we're extremely experienced here, particularly with the architect that's been chosen by the city for this project, Verdi Design. We've completed over 100 projects with Verdi as the architect, so we're very familiar with their work, and the collaboration between our teams is really second to none. So. So in summary, we really feel like we have by far the most experience in this type of construction of any contractor in this market. We commit to a collaborative and professional process, which I hope Tara can speak to already. We've been through several months already to get to this stage. We feel that our pricing is always competitive and fair, and the quality of our finished product really is second to none. So thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to-
Be close. We may have questions for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pauline, do you have any questions on the staff presentation or?
Not really. I think he answered a lot of the questions of his track record and working collaboratively with the architect, and he'll be working with the same one, so I'm pleased.
Trace, Councilwoman Mendoza?
Very impressive list of clients. I'm looking forward to seeing your work on this project. We're real excited about it. So thank you.
Councilman Albert?
I just wanted to clarify, verify that this still includes the traffic improvements on Blue Oaks and also on Westbrook as well, the traffic lights?
It's not part of this contract, but Public Works is in the process of doing that.
So that's all still the same?
That is still the same.
Awesome.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi?
We're glad you're here, and thank you for the information.
So there seem to be supply chain issues everywhere. Is there any supply chain issues with this operation?
It's a long project, right? This is a two- to two-and-a-half-year project, so certainly, supply chain has been a huge impact to construction, really since COVID hit a couple of years ago. But we feel confident at this stage that we can mitigate those. We have the time upfront to make sure that we can get in front of all those things. Some of the key vendors on the project are companies that we work with day in, day out, so we have established relationships with all of our key subcontractors and vendors. So yes, it's something that we have to look at, but on a project like this, it's certainly something we can manage around and mitigate, so.
Great. I forget where I was, but somebody said that there's a glass shortage out in the world, and that's the last thing with all the beaches in the world and all the sand in the world. You think there wouldn't be an issue with that, so. Thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment. And I'll close public comment and ask the council if they have any additional questions. Seeing no additional ques-
I have a quick comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Albert.
I live in the neighborhood right across the street, and I'm real excited. The staff are excited about you guys because we want it done quickly and be a good neighbor to all of us, and it sounds like you guys have that good reputation, so I appreciate that and do it again.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-098, approving a design-assist construction agreement by and between Robert A. Bothman, Inc., Doing Business as Robert A. Bothman Construction, Inc., and the City of Roseville, and authorizing the city manager to execute on behalf of the City of Roseville, and also consider adopting ordinance number 6631, authorizing certain amendments to fiscal year 2022/23 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashelt.
Yes.
I'm excited. We're going to have beachfront soccer complex. I saw it there, didn't I? All right, next up is a public hearing on our housing authority, City Council FY2324 Annual Plan, and I will open the public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm Trisha Isom, your Housing Manager in the Economic Development Department. Tonight, I have with me Suzie Cook Turner. She's our Housing Supervisor for the Housing Authority, and she's going to be presenting our annual plan.
Good evening, members of the Housing Authority Board. I am Suzie Cook Turner, the Housing Supervisor for Roseville Housing Authority, and tonight I will be presenting Housing Authority's annual plan for fiscal year 2023/2024. All housing authorities must submit an agency plan, which includes a five-year plan and an annual plan. Our annual plan follows the progression of the five-year plan submitted to HUD in 2020. Roseville Housing Authority's annual plan is due to HUD each year by April 15. The draft annual plan is required to have a 45-day public comment period, which was noticed on January 20, 2023, and closes tonight, March 15. To date, staff has not received any comments regarding this item. Roseville Housing Authority's five-year plan goals are shown here. We continually apply for additional vouchers in order to expand the supply of assisted housing. With the support of the VA, Roseville Housing Authority applied twice for additional HUD-VAS vouchers. We were awarded 10 vouchers in January 2022, an additional 10 in February 2023. With a letter of support from our local continuum of care, Roseville Housing Authority submitted an application for stability vouchers that will assist households who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. We are still awaiting notification and are hopeful to be able to add this new voucher type to our many special voucher programs. In October of 2022, Roseville Housing Authority received an award of eight new vouchers. The increase in the regular housing choice vouchers was the first in 12 years. In order to improve the quality of assisted housing, RHA resumed our housing quality standards inspections in 2022 after they were halted due to the COVID-19 pandemic. RHA staff completed over 600 inspections within a 12-month period, which is double the amount typically completed for that timeframe. We continue to collaborate with the Housing Division and Reserve Funds to provide legal services through Project Sentinel for those experiencing housing discrimination. And as part of the contract, Roseville Housing Authority hosted a fair housing training in April of 2022. Lastly, Roseville Housing Authority regularly collaborates in northern, with Northern California housing authorities, including Placer County, to optimize administration of the various voucher programs, as well as the family sufficiency program. We collaborated with Placer County Housing Authority, our local continuum of care, and 11 nonprofit agencies to assist applicants with the emergency housing voucher program. To date, we have issued all 50 of our emergency housing vouchers. So I did want to highlight the special vouchers that Roseville Housing Authority has been awarded since we started participating. awarded since we started participating in these special voucher programs in 2014. In total, we now have 570 regular housing choice vouchers, 75 non-elderly disabled vouchers, a total of 85 VASH vouchers, 43 mainstream vouchers, and 50 emergency housing vouchers. The 178 VASH mainstream and emergency housing vouchers focus specifically on those who are homeless or at risk of homelessness and require extensive case management and collaboration with either the Veterans Administration, Placer County Health and Human Services, or an area nonprofit. In 2022, HUD awarded Roseville Housing Authority a total of 28 new vouchers, which is twice our typical average increase. For Roseville Housing Authority to be in compliance with Housing Choice Voucher Program regulations, the lease-up rate for each calendar year cannot exceed 100% of its allocations of vouchers per voucher type, while expending no more than our annual budget allocation for the program. It's quite a balancing act. We did go into shortfall situation for a few months, which in the end helped us increase our budget by 11.3%. Roseville Housing Authority continues to be an award-winning agency. We were recognized by NARO and awarded a 2022 National Award of Merit in the Affordable Housing category for the Main Street Plaza and Annex on Main Development. We were also recognized, along with Placer County Housing Authority and the Continuum of Care, and awarded the 2022 Outstanding Collaboration Award from the Placer Collaborative Network. We have maintained our high performer status for the 17th year. And bottom line, the reason that Roseville Housing Authority staff love to come to work every day is our participants, and we love to see them be successful. We are happy to announce that four families graduated the Family Self-Sufficiency Program since August of 2022 and have been awarded exactly $54,158.19 in escrow funds. So tonight, we are recommending that the Housing Authority Board receive public comment on this item and adopt the resolution authorizing the submittal of the fiscal year 2023/2024 annual plan to HUD. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I'm sure we're all going to want to make some comments, but I'm going to inquire if the council has questions on the presentation at this point in time. Okay, I'm going to open it for public comment. I'm going to close public comment, and I'm going to close the public hearing, and now is the time for any additional comments, and I'm sure we have some, right? Oh, I did have a question. You mentioned VASH, and for the viewing audience, can you, that's an acronym, so?
So, it's Veterans Assisted Supportive Housing. It's for veterans, for vets.
Thanks very much, okay. All right, Councilman Albert, any comments before we take action?
I just appreciate that Roseville keeps setting the standard in our county for doing it right as far as getting people into housing as quick as we can, so thanks for your work. It definitely shows.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernascony?
I echo Councilmember Albert's comments. The work that you do every day is very important.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakucci?
I won't say I'm amazed. I know you've been doing great work, but you still amaze me when you outdo yourself and are able to help so many people get back on their feet, and different types of vouchers and affects different types of situations, and I'm real pleased of what you've been doing and your staff, and so how, I'm very happy we can help people.
Mr. Mendoza?
Love seeing those stats. Just very impressive. Thank you for doing what you do.
Thanks.
So, I'm going to ask questions instead of making comments. How do we raise awareness about this incredible uplifting work that you all are doing? The graduation, you know, how do we? Yeah.
Well, where the Family Self-Sufficiency Program is concerned, we are collaborating with Placer County Housing Authority, and there is a discussion, because we've basically revamped our program and we're achieving a lot of success from that and the collaboration from them. We have discussed having graduation ceremonies for these families, so that will probably be coming in the near future.
I mean, this is such an uplifting report, and it just, yeah, anyway. I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. At this time, the City Council, acting as the Board of Directors for the Housing Authority, will consider adopting Resolution Number 1-23, approving the fiscal year 2023/24 annual plan. May I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our call with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Thank you.
Stay right there, okay? Because you're up next for Item 8.2, the Community Development Block Grant Program, 2022 Annual Action Plans, Substantial Amendment, Community Development Block Grant Agreement Amendment, and Rating and Ranking Guidelines. And I will open the public hearing.
Yes, we get to stay, and I'll be presenting the proposed amendment to the action plan as well as the rating and ranking guidelines. In May of 2022, council approved the 2022 CDBG Action Plan, which included an allocation of $15,000 to Placer Veterans Stand Down for the organization's upcoming event to be held this May. This annual event has traditionally been held at the grounds in Roseville until 2020, when they could not secure the facility for the event that year. Since that time, subsequent events were held in Auburn, which was unfortunately not an ideal location, and it led to many veterans being unable to attend and make it up the hill. The 2023 event was originally planned to be held at the Gold Country Fairgrounds in Auburn, but the organizer was able to secure a spot at the grounds in Roseville. Unfortunately, this was after the action plan had been approved by both City Council and HUD. So, the organization expects to be able to double the amount of Roseville veterans who are able to attend the event when it's hosted in Roseville, and the new contract to utilize at the grounds will cost less than the alternate location. That's why we're here tonight. According to the City's Citizen Participation Plan, an adopted annual action plan will be amended anytime there is a change in the purpose, location, scope, or beneficiaries of an activity. So, the change in the location of the event constitutes a substantial amendment. In order to provide the public the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed substantial amendment, the city opened a 30-day public comment period. It began January 17th and does conclude tonight. So far, no public comments have been received. The city's CDBG program receives annual applications, which must be reviewed, rated, and ranked, in order to determine which programs receive funding. The rating and ranking guidelines are in place to ensure an unbiased review process, and CDBG staff has utilized the current guidelines since they were adopted by City Council in 2009. Staff recommends updating the guidelines to ensure they are relevant and up to date, and recommends adjusting the makeup of the application review team, as well as increasing the minimum and maximum requests in the public services category. The minimum funding request will be increased from $5,000 to $10,000, and the maximum funding request will increase from $15,000 to $25,000. The proposed revisions will align the guidelines with the current needs of the community and the average annual grant allocations received from HUD. If approved, the proposed rating and ranking guidelines will go into effect for 24/25 CDBG funding cycles, as we've already received our applications for this year. Finally, staff recommends that City Council receive public comment on the proposed substantial amendment to the 2022 annual action plan and adopt a resolution to approve the amendment for submission to HUD, and adopt a resolution to approve the proposed rating and ranking guidelines. And this concludes my presentation, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, I'll ask, council has any questions on the presentation? Councilman Albert?
When you're increasing the funding request from $15,000 to $25,000, what are the chances they'll use the full $25,000? Is that pretty much a given, or is there?
It's a given. Right now, what happens is 20% of the CDBG funds, allocated funds, are able to go toward public services, and sometimes, when we limit it to $15,000, we don't actually get to expend the full 20%. So, we're trying to increase the utilization under public services. We may not be able to give everybody, grant everybody $25,000, but it'll allow everybody to apply for $25,000 or the maximum if that's what they want, and then we can adjust from there. And, again, just spend the maximum.
Thanks for explaining that.
Great, okay. Anyone else? All right, so, and this applies to the agenda item before as well. Is our pro-housing designation really helping with these types of programs?
Not with CDBG. With CDBG, we receive our annual allocation from HUD, no matter what. And then with the Housing Authority, it's the same. So, pro-housing, that's more of a state funding, new thing for the state.
All right, great. I will open it up for public comment, and I will close public comment and close the public hearing and inquire if the council has any further questions on the presentation.
Maybe just a comment. I'm glad it's down here and so that more people can take advantage of Stand Down. I've helped in the past there, and there's a lot of people who come down, and not only the veterans, but veterans' families as well. And the more opportunities that people have to receive this assistance, and it's not just for homeless people, it's for all veterans, and it's an excellent program. They even have a vet to take care of your animals, so I mean, it's take care of everything. It's very well-planned.
Great. Not seeing any other questions. I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-084, approving the proposed amendment to the 2022 Annual Action Plan, and adopting Resolution Number 23-085, approving a First Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Agreement, or CDBG, buy-in between the City of Roseville and Placer Veterans Stand Down Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Roseville, and also consider adopting Resolution Number 23-086, approving the City of Roseville Community Development Block Grant Rating and Ranking Guidelines. May I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our call with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentations. Next, we'll have Item 8.3, Hydroelectric Adjustment, Roseville Municipal Code, and I will open the public hearing. Mr. Beans?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. I'm Dan Beans, your Electric Utility Director, and we're here to chat about the hydroelectric adjustment, and I've brought Joanna Kuci, who's our Acting Finance Administrator, who's going to tell you all about it.
In 2009, Roseville Electric implemented a hydroelectric surcharge, and it was implemented to mitigate the impact of variations in hydroelectric resources on energy supply costs in our portfolio. The hydroelectric adjustment is calculated annually and effective July 1 through June 30th each year. Currently, it is calculated using the expected hydroelectric generation or the normal generation, the precipitation in the eight-station index in California, and then the energy prices on May 1 of each year. Just so you know, 20% to 25% of Roseville's energy comes from our hydroelectric resources when we receive 100% of our allocation. So changes in the expected generation can have a very large impact on our portfolio and our portfolio costs. So there are two parts to our proposal today. The first is to increase the expected generation of hydroelectric energy to 277 gigawatt-hours with the addition of the Feather River resource. And the second change is to update the calculation to use forecasted hydroelectric generation as of May 1 of each year and replace precipitation as a calculation variable. So, Roseville Electric has entered into a purchase power agreement for 55 gigawatt-hours of annual generation from the Feather River project. Based on this purchase power agreement, the municipal code, average expected energy from average precipitation increases from 222 gigawatt-hours to 277 gigawatt-hours. And then the second proposed change is to update the surcharge calculation to use hydroelectric generation instead of precipitation. Historically, precipitation has closely mirrored hydroelectric energy generation for the city. The existing calculation appropriately mitigated the reduced hydroelectric generation on our costs in the past. However, beginning in 2017, the relationship between single-year precipitation and hydroelectric generation weakened. As longer-term droughts occur, that single year of good precipitation does not necessarily mean we are going to receive good hydroelectric generation in the next year. So therefore, the use of precipitation as a leading indicator to predict hydroelectric generation is no longer a reliable variable. As shown in the graph on the screen, in 2009 through 2016, precipitation and hydrogeneration tracked together in both direction and magnitude. However, beginning in 2017, you can see a deviation between precipitation and hydroelectric The Electric Department receives monthly hydroelectric delivery forecasts from the federal government and Northern California Power Agency. These delivery forecasts are based on reservoir levels and other hydroelectric generated constraints. The recommendation is to use the hydroelectric delivery forecast as of May 1 of each year to calculate the hydroelectric surcharge and replace precipitation as the calculation variable. This change would align the hydroelectric adjustment with our adopted rate policies to match revenues with expenses. This method change would be more accurate in predicting the cost of replacement energy when hydroelectric generation is below normal. In some years, the hydroelectric surcharge would be lower using deliveries as a variable, and in some years, the rate would be higher. In all cases, using deliveries instead of precipitation improves the accuracy of the hydroelectric surcharge rate. Using a couple of recent years as an example, in FY '21, precipitation was 65% of normal. However, we received 99% of our expected deliveries. Using the new calculation, the rate would have been lower for our customers using that calculation. In FY '23, our current fiscal year, precipitation was 84% of normal, but we are only receiving 40% of our deliveries, and therefore, using the new calculation, this year's rate would have been higher with the new calculation versus the old calculation. If we had had this new calculation in effect for FY '23, the utility would have been able to reduce the energy cost surcharge that was approved by the City Council in December. Based on the presentation, the recommendation is to introduce for first reading an ordinance approving municipal code changes related to the hydroelectric adjustment, including updating the annual expected energy and changing the calculation variable from the eight-station index precipitation to forecasted hydroelectric energy generation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Councilwoman Rakucci, I'm going to start with you.
No, it makes a lot of sense. A lot of variables occur with the storms that we had and also the fires that we had. A lot of sediment goes into rivers and the reservoirs, and that makes a difference if they can generate. And this makes more sense and a better way to evaluate our costs for our residents.
Councilmember Mendoza?
I'm all for mitigating costs, so this is good. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Albert?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Bernascony?
Do you have any questions?
So, a couple of questions. So, the Feather River project is Oroville, right? I mean, the generation's out of Oroville.
Yes.
Right? Not out of Shasta? Okay.
Oroville.
Even though that's a state, that's a state water project and we're a bureau project. Okay. So, what the change is, is basically looking at multiple years versus a single year, is that? Why don't you describe the change again? Because to me, it was counterintuitive, what you said about 2023 and how it would have affected the surcharge or the-
So, currently, the calculation uses the prior year's precipitation-
Okay.
-to calculate the surcharge for the next year.
You have me right there, because 2022 reservoir level's extremely low-
But the precipitation was actually pretty decent.
Because of temperature management, pass-through flows that don't generate any power, and, okay, great, all right. I will open it up for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment and close the public hearing and inquire if there are any additional questions. All right, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council will introduce for a first reading ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville, amending Section 14.24.052 of Chapter 14.24 of Title 14 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding- of Title 14 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding hydroelectric adjustment. May I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishelt.
Yes. Thank you very much for your report. Item up is Item 8.4, West Roseville Specific Plan Parcel F-22, 52-51, Fidament Road's Specific Plan Amendment and Development Agreement Amendment. And I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Haldishelt, members of the City Council. I'm Greg Bitter with the Development Services Department. We're here tonight to give you a report on a specific plan amendment and development agreement amendment that's going to help facilitate financing of a couple of affordable housing projects in the West Roseville Specific Plan. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kenny Shallow, Associate Planner with the Development Services Department.
Thanks, Greg. Good evening, Mayor Haldishelt, and councilmembers. So, the project site is located at the northeast corner of Fidament Road and Harvey Way in the West Roseville Specific Plan area. The site is currently vacant and has a land use designation of high-density residential and is zoned multifamily residential, or R3. It has a current unit allocation of 244 units, and 184 of these units are designated as affordable rental units. Surrounding uses include an open space parcel to the north, a medium-density residential subdivision to the east, the Plaza Blue Oaks Retail Center to the south across Harvey Way, and a vacant community commercial parcel and open space to the west across Fidament Road. As part of the project, the Planning Commission approved a tentative parcel map to subdivide the site into two parcels, as shown on this slide, and a tree permit to remove one native oak tree to accommodate future development. The entitlements before you tonight include a specific plan amendment and development agreement amendment to reallocate affordable housing units among the subject parcels. The entitlements was facilitate the development of an apartment project on each of the resultant parcels, and those projects are subject to the city's streamlined objective design standards process because at least 20% of the units will be provided as affordable to lower-income households. An ODS application is currently in review for both parcels, but the approval of those projects are dependent on the approval of the entitlements before you tonight. The specific plan document will be amended to reflect the subdivision of the site into two parcels, F-22A and F-22B, and the resulting unit allocations. No changes will be made to the existing zoning or land use of the site. 82 units will be allocated to F-22A, and 162 units will be allocated to F-22B. And these unit allocations result in a density consistent with the existing HDR land use. Based on the specific plan's affordable housing plan, parcel F-22 is allocated 184 affordable rental units with 91 very-low and 93 low-income units. With the subdivision of the site, 81 affordable units will be allocated to F-22A, making it nearly 100% affordable with one market-rate manager's unit. And F-22B will be mixed income with 103 affordable and 59 market-rate units. Development Agreement buy-in between the City of Roseville and Fidament Land Venture will be modified to address the revised affordable housing unit allocations and the subdivision of the site. Staff finds the DA amendment is in conformance with the public health, safety, and welfare, and will not adversely affect the orderly development of the property or the preservation of property values. The project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15182 of the CECL guidelines as a residential project pursuant to a specific plan. The EIR for the West Roseville Specific Plan was certified by City Council in February 2004. No significant changes to the site or new potentially significant impacts have been identified that would require a subsequent or supplemental EIR, and the proposed project is consistent with the previously completed analysis. The project was heard by Planning Commission on February 9, and no public testimony was received. The Planning Commission recommended City Council approve the specific plan amendment and development agreement amendment, and approve the tentative subdivision map and tree permit. In regards to public outreach, early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website and on the city's Projects of Interest website. A public informational meeting was held in November of 2022. Two members of the public attended, and none of them expressed any opposition to the project. Notices of the hearing were published in the Press Tribune, distributed to a 300-foot radius, and posted on the Arcona website. And to date, no comments have been received. In conclusion, staff finds the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, general plan, and the West Roseville Specific Plan, and the required findings of fact can be made. So the Planning Commission recommends the City Council adopt a resolution approving the specific plan amendment, and adopt the five findings of fact, and introduce for first reading an ordinance approving the development agreement amendment. That concludes our presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Does the council have any questions? Councilman Albert?
The one tree they're going to remove, is it the one that's next to the road?
Yeah, it's towards the west of the property, along Harvey Way.
And what, is the building actually going there, or is that a parking lot?
Including their access road to the site.
There's no way to save that tree?
Unfortunately, no. It wasn't in the best of health either. There was an arbiters report provided, so.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Bernisconi?
Can you talk about the Rena numbers and how this comes into play?
I can, sure. So this site, so in the housing element update, in our regional housing needs assessment inventory, this site is identified as, so these units are counted as parts. So they don't help the deficit, I guess, is the bad news. But the fact that we are getting the units constructed will help the city meet its affordable housing goals.
And it's a great location.
Yeah.
It'll, I think, tie right in very well with access to schools, transit, retail.
I think, yeah, the retail center across the street, and also there's a new daycare that's just about to be open right across the street, too. So it really has everything, you know, daycare, elementary school, all the public services are very close by. Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a good site.
Councilwoman Rakucci?
I like what you said about all the notices that you've put out, you know, a lot of our regular notices. But I also want to bring it to the audiences to notice that you also, on the website, put all the particular planning items that are coming up. So like, this one's coming up, and others that are coming up, that will be coming up, is there, so that anyone at home, if they're interested, they're hearing what we're doing here on this item. But that's a good opportunity to look on that for future items.
Councilmember Mendoza?
I have nothing that hasn't already been said. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll open it up for public comment. No public comment?
Is it appropriate for the applicant?
Yeah. Ask the applicant to come forward.
Good evening. I'm Chris Stewart, the applicant, on behalf of USA Properties Fund. And Mila Turzic is here from USA Properties, can answer your questions if you have them. Thanks for the presentation, Kenny. We don't have anything further. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any comments, questions?
Well, just because you're here, Chris, made the trip down. And maybe this is even a staff question, but can you just talk about timeframes?
Yes. Mila might need to help me a little bit, but as Kenny described, we are going through the ODS process for design review right now. And there are two projects there. So there's now a competitive process to get financing for those projects. So USA will engage in that process, and when they get financing, they'll be built. But they're endeavoring to get that financing immediately.
Great. Thank you.
And I can just chime in a little bit. USA is submitting applications to the state. We also have a few other affordable projects that are submitting applications to the state for tax credits and bond allocation. I think Friday may be a deadline that's coming up for the first portion of the application. So we have several affordable housing projects that are hoping to get state funding, and then we'll really see some activity.
Yeah. But in that competitive process, projects like this, that are proximate to so many services, score really well. So that's why these sites have a benefit.
And this is one area that our pro-housing designation gives all of the applicants a 10-point bonus. So they are a little bit more competitive than other jurisdictions without the pro-housing.
Great.
That earlier.
Thank you for that designation.
Fingers crossed. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Both.
Any other public comments? I'll close public comment, close the public hearing, ask if the council has any other comments or questions. All right. I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-089, amending the West Roseville Specific Plan, and introduce for a first reading an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Roseville, adopting a Tenth Amendment of the Development Agreement buy-in between the City of Roseville and GenCalifornia 15 LLC, Taylor Morrison of California LLC, and West Roseville Development Company Incorporated, relative to the West Roseville Specific Plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements on behalf of the City of Roseville. May I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Haldishelt, I'm sorry, Vice
Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishelt.
Yes, and thank you for bringing quality projects to the City of Roseville. We've come to the point in the evening where we'll open it up for a second round of public comments. Anybody? 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 No, okay. I'll close that. I'll ask the city manager if he has anything else to report this evening.
I do. I'd just like to make a quick comment. You know, I know we're not supposed to have favorites, right? We do a lot of cool things in this city, from our electric utility, our water utility, our police, our fire. But this evening, you guys approved a decade-long project that's been in the works in the citywide sports complex. There's been a lot of battles, a lot of work, and I just want to thank Jill Geller and her team for their tenaciousness and staying on top of it and bringing this forward, and thank this council for their support of this project. I think it is going to be not only a great addition to the quality of life for our city, but a huge impact in sports tourism and a real economic engine for the region. So thank you to the council for your support, and thank you to Jill and your team for seeing it through. Good job.
Thank you. I'll ask her city attorney if she has anything to report.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Great. I'll invite my council members to, starting with Councilman Albert, to report on anything you'd like the public to know about.
Just been engaging with the public like all the other council members. The only thing I did want to mention is earlier, I made the comment of my, I live in the neighborhood right across the street from the soccer complex. It's a big neighborhood, and I'm outside the 500-foot zone, so I didn't want anybody to be concerned about being able to vote on that. So, that's it.
Vice Mayor Bernisconi?
I don't have anything this evening.
Yeah. Councilwoman Rakucci?
Just a couple things. Most of the meetings that I've gone to in the last couple weeks are all water-related. So Placer County Water Agency, Northern California Water Association, and Regional Water Authority. But what they have in common is a lot of discussion on their strategic workshop, but with all the rain that you see, and of course, when we've had drought, and it goes drought and rain, and rain and drought, but talking about storage. Storage, whether it's above-ground storage, aqua recharge, and the future site's reservoir that we're kind of all looking at it, that it'll happen in the future. But one thing I've drawn to your attention, an item that was on our council meeting tonight in our consent, was, it's called a 215 water contract and letter agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation in Roseville. And what all that means is that we can store water in our aqua recharge from non-storable flood-control water. And so, again, the water that's been running out because of the heavy rains, we'll be able to take an opportunity of putting that in our aqua recharge. And that's a really special thing. So we were able to do some a few months ago with a different kind of contract, and this is a different kind of contract, but this one could be used over about a year, you know, when there's a need and that we can get it, and if we're in a position of being able to obtain it. So that is fantastic. Second thing, I was going to tell you about an opportunity to go to Roseville High School, and I think our mayor stopped by, and maybe, I'm not sure if other council members did, but they celebrated their 111th year anniversary by putting pictures of students and teachers in the last 111 years in a new format. So you'll see them up in like a rotunda on the side, and it was fantastic. Just a really nice way to put a panoramic view of, from in the beginning and to where we are now. And I'm a Roseville graduate, so is, no, she's an Oakmont graduate.
I'm a Viking, sorry. I know, you're a tiger. You want me to be a tiger.
I want you to be a tiger, but you are Roseville.
There, so I guess I'm a traitor these days, but...
Okay, there we go. You saved yourself. Your kids go there, so it's okay. But it was a really nice event. And then they have a phase two where they're going to be working in the library, and it's on their, kind of a window dressing, and it has like big tiger eyes over the top, and it says, "Once a Tiger." But if you're inside the library, it's just regular glass. And really, with Roseville having, that's the first high school that we had in Roseville, it really brought a lot of history. They added also not only just the school, but you see things about the railroad and other entities in Roseville. So that was pretty, that was pretty cool. And then Mayor Haldishelt and I were able to have a community coffee last Saturday, and we were able to use Carnegie Historic Facility, the museum, and that turned out really nice. Kind of caught it in between the rains, so I was real thankful that we had people that came out, asked a lot of questions, learned about even our Carnegie library. But it was a really nice opportunity to talk about projects, questions they had about projects, upcoming projects. And some people were very new in Roseville, and were, you know, asking, I brought some things about how to get connected with Roseville. And they, you know, took that to kind of get acquainted to our city. So that was a lot of fun, and I felt that we listened to a lot of concerns that our residents had.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Two of my council assignments met last week, the Roseville Police Athletics League. They are looking for volunteers for their various programs and youth programs that they have that start up this summer, and some of them actually go throughout the year. So if you have young ones, or you yourself are looking to volunteer for a very, very great organization that benefits our community in so many ways, I would encourage you. It's arpal, rosevillespoliceathleticsleague.org, or you can find them through their Facebook, and they're also on Instagram. There's information on there about the various types of volunteer opportunities that they have. Also, the Placer LaFco met last week, and there were no issues related to Roseville to report out on that. Myself, as well as, I think, all of us, the council members, we attended the firefighters' crab feed that was put on by the firefighters' union, and just want to congratulate them on another great crab feed. The money raised at that event goes to a lot of their youth services and community programs. So that is a big fundraiser for them, and that money does a lot of good for our community. So I just want to congratulate them on another job well done this year. And then just lastly, one of our council priorities is our corridors and our revitalization of our corridors. And I just want to give a shout-out to our code enforcement team. They have really been making some amazing progress and forward movement in some of our problem areas on all three of our corridors. And so I would be remiss if they didn't recognize the efforts that they're making and the work that they're doing, because it is definitely noticeable. And I know our community appreciates it, our residents appreciate it, and it does not go unnoticed, the work that you do. And I know that it takes a lot of time sometimes to get these areas cleaned up and get things moving forward, but it is a key part of the revitalization for these corridors, and it is so important to our city. So I just wanted to thank that team and let them know that they are appreciated. And with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thanks. We have so many high-quality professionals. Earlier this week, as the, I don't know, I've lost count, 10th, 11th Atmospheric River started, you know, come upon our area.
Continuing.
Yeah, yeah. I surrender, right? My colleagues know I've been asking for rain. I'm done. But, you know, news channels reached out because the news was about flooding. And our public affairs team responded in post-quick order, and really kind of celebrated the fact that, you know, I think it was Mayor Alan Paneshi back in the 80s, and those councils, and the congressional delegation created a flood-safe Roseville. So kudos to the past council who endured some horrific flooding, got it fixed, and our staff for elevating that and creating awareness about that. So... our staff for elevating that and creating awareness about that, so people, yeah, so that is, that's great. We have a lot of staff, and I know Councilwoman Rakucci sits on the Placer Flood Control Agency. We all represent the city in a variety of ways. Tomorrow is the Seco Board of Directors meeting. On there is a $6 million award for Dry Creek, Dry Creek, Greenway, East Trail. That's an important project to connect, create, not just, to create a walkable community and a bikeable community. On our agenda tonight were a couple of proclamations, one for Funny Bones, and Funny Bones is celebrating their 25th anniversary tomorrow night, so there's a fundraiser tomorrow night that some of us will be at. Take a good look at the hair. It's going to be gone, so the person sitting here at our next council meeting is not going to be an imposter. I'm, for the fifth year, getting my head shaved in support of Keaton Raphael's in St. Baldric, so I'll be looking a lot more like Ryan DeVore than Doc Brown from Back to the Future. Anyway. And then, you know, Vice Mayor Bernuscony told me when we were transitioning to, you know, changing chairs, that there will be some really fun things that I get to do as mayor. And tomorrow, I will be delivering, declaring today, actually, but we'll do it tomorrow, Hazel Noff Day. Hazel's 104 years old, and she'll be celebrating her birthday, and she has quite, if you look at the proclamation, she has quite a record of community service, and so that's a real delight to do. And you told me there would be these moments, right? That would just... Go ahead.
And I'll just say real quickly, I had heard about Hazel, and a quick story is there was a little, you'll probably hear this tomorrow, a little girl who wanted to meet with her and brought Legos that they could do together. And on the box, the Lego said that it was for 5 to 99-year-olds, and so the little girl said, "I brought this, but I don't think that you can play with me." And Hazel said, "Well, why not?" And she said, "Because you're 103." And so the family wrote to Legos, and now that's why that age is now off of their box. So, pretty cool. So you're going to have a great time tomorrow, Bruce.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You told me that story. I'm glad you shared it with the public, so... And then the last thing, you know, we have so many wonderful nonprofits in the city, and then on Saturday evening, Tommy Apostolus is having their annual dinner, and so I think some of us will be there, and that helps support the Shop with a Cop and Shop with the Doc and all these other events that happen in December at predawn hours at Kohl's. So, you know, we're out there, and we're available, as my colleagues said, and we enjoy... What's that?
Dom's birthday. Dom's birthday.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we do have a birthday. Does that call for a song or just an acknowledgement, right? You know, so...
Our esteemed city manager has a birthday this weekend, so happy birthday to you. Your council gave you a gift. It's coming down your way if you don't already have it, so enjoy your weekend, and thanks...
You do look a year older.
And happy birthday.
Yeah. Unless there's anything else to come before us, we'll be adjourned till the first Wednesday in April. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.